All right. So, welcome to the Town of Sykesville Town Council Meeting, less than air. Today is Monday, February tenth, twenty twenty five, and the meeting is adjur-- uh, geez, yeah, we're done already. Start at seven oh one. Can we start by standing and saying the pledge of allegiance in a moment of silence, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Joe, I want to start by asking if there's been any public comments?
One has signed up for public comments.
Okay, so we can move to the consent agenda, which only consists of the meetings from January twenty seventh, twenty twenty five. Everybody had a chance to read the minutes. Any questions, any changes?
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
So we have a first and we have a second. Do we have a motion to, I'm sorry.
I did a motion for approving it.
Um, are we, all in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Consent agenda passed. Okay, so new order of business, we only have one thing. It's the introduction to the ordinance number twenty twenty five oh one. It is the FY twenty twenty five budget revision, and I'm going to turn this over to Joe, and he can give a summary.
Thank you, Madam President. So again, this is, I guess, a typical process that we follow. So right at the midpoint of the fiscal year, we like to do a budget revision and make any adjustments that are necessary. So again, this is budget revision number one for FY twenty five. It does show an increase of four hundred eighty-eight thousand and five dollars to our revenues and expenses. Majority of that is in the capital side of things, and we'll go over, obviously, each of those categories right now. So we'll start with revenues mainly in the intergovernmental accounts, so the income tax revenue. So as we establish our budget for the fiscal year, we don't have a full fiscal year, or I guess last fiscal year, to do that three-year rolling average for our income tax. So as we start the current fiscal year, we actually have all of that data, so then we can adjust that number, so that actually shows a true three-year rolling average. And we are bumping up what we expected to collect in income tax revenue by just over eighty thousand. Also in that category, we had to lower our state police aid. So again, this is based on, this is a calculation that the state does, they give us this information. It's usually mostly based on crime data that we have in town. So again, as our crime numbers potentially go down and other jurisdictions go up, we get a little less revenue for there. So again, we had to reduce that line item ever so slightly. And then the remainder revenues that were adjusted were in the miscellaneous category. Our interest account is actually doing quite well. These are the investments that the town has with our cash accounts. You know, we had originally budgeted about a hundred thousand dollars. We've actually already collected a hundred thousand dollars current fiscal year in interest, so we're bumping that up to just under two hundred thousand. We are recognizing the use of some restricted fund balance for the gatehouse. This is for the gatehouse porch work that was approved several months ago and actually already completed. This is just us recognizing where that revenue is coming from. And then in unassigned fund balance, beefing that number up, and this is almost all related to the approval for additional funding for the station project. So the reason, again, as everybody remembers, we approved three hundred fifty thousand dollars to go to the station project, the reason that entire number is not reflected in the revenue is because some of that revenue is coming from other sources. It's not all of the unassigned fund balance. So those are the, those are the large revenue changes. Does anybody have any questions about the revenue side?
So the three-year rolling average for the income tax, is that pretty much right on? Like, does the state give you a number, or you just base it on the three-year rolling average?
Yeah, the state doesn't give us any kind of projections for income tax revenue. They give us projections for police aid and property taxes.
So were we over or under last fiscal year on that income tax? We budgeted?
We've always been over. Or I shouldn't say always. We've been over the last five years, give or take.
Okay.
So typically, when we budget, we collect more than what we get.
Okay.
Right, it sounds more like a hedge, right?
It is, yeah. There's always a little bit of a buffer, a little bit of whatever we have in the income tax category.
So they have to wait till the income tax is filed for you to actually get it, is that correct? I mean, to get the final number.
Yeah, so if you notice, actually, if you see the treasurer's report now, you see, like, income tax revenue is pretty light right now for what we expect to collect for the fiscal year. Typically, we don't, we don't see those, those large deposits until May, June, July. So usually, we're in next fiscal year before we're collecting the last payment for current fiscal year.
Okay.
And then usually, that's an adjustment during the audit process, that they just pull that back into the previous fiscal year.
Just under public works, you probably said this, it probably went right over my head, but I understand the fifteen thousand for equipment maintenance, but the...
That's a expense.
Expense, that's what I meant, expense, but then the...
He hasn't got it.
Oh, there you go. That's why it went over my head. There you go.
Glossed right over them. Any other revenue questions? Moving to expenses, professional services is always one that we end up having to adjust, obviously, legal counsel, bumping that up by a hundred thousand dollars. This is, of course, due to the ongoing litigations that the town is involved with. The general property liability line item had to be increased. This is just a, really just something we didn't anticipate increasing from last fiscal year. So we thought it was going to stay somewhat level, but they actually bumped up the rate ever so slightly. We just didn't catch it when we were putting the budget together. Uh, let's see. One thing I do want to mention, I don't know if I've mentioned this before, when there are categorical changes, so again, when the entire section goes up or down, that's what you see in the ordinance itself. Typically, there are several other adjustments that are just in the, like, line item to line item. So if, within a category, I can say reduce salaries to offset some other increases we have to other line items, it doesn't show up in the ordinance, but it does show up in the detail. So I just want to point that out there, everybody should be looking at the detail that's provided, not just the ordinance itself. Because again, there were changes in the both administrative and public safety sections, but because they offset each other, the categories didn't increase or decrease.
The Excel spreadsheet.
So as previously mentioned, the public works section did increase. For equipment maintenance, we raised around fifteen thousand dollars. This is to replace some of our old dumpsters. We've been kind of going through an annual cycle of replacing some of our commercial dumpsters that we have. Plus, this will include also another order of the trash cars that we have, making sure we have enough for event season. And we've noticed something, which I guess we didn't anticipate when we bought those trailers, was people actually take them with them when they move out of town.
Really?
Yeah. I don't know why people want to take a trash container, but...
Sentimental reasons.
That's what's been happening, so...
I don't even have one of those.
We can, we can put out a public notice that they really should stay with the property, but they...
I believe they call that theft.
We can charge them.
You would think when it had...
If they move within town.
Maybe you should put property of the town of Sykesville on the nuance. No, that's, that's...
That has created...
Staying with the public works, the operating supplies account, we had to increase. There's just been, like, this is, this category, this line item was more of like death by a thousand paper cuts is why we're increasing this. There's just been a lot of little things that have been popping up. We had to replace a handheld blower, we had to buy a new trash pump, there was just lots of little things that just kind of kept adding up already through the fiscal year. So that's why we're increasing that category. Park maintenance, increasing by a total of twenty-six thousand dollars, a little over twenty-six thousand dollars. Some of this has to do with stormwater maintenance or sediment pond maintenance, so we had the issue, and I'm going to forget, it's off of the pond, off of care, care of court, we had a evasive weed issue that we had to deal with out there. So again, that was just an unexpected expense, so we had to account for that. And then the property maintenance at South Branch Park is the work that we just started on the waystation down there to get it repainted and repaired. And then, historic buildings, the reason that, that category is increasing, we talked about this several months ago, but there was, there was a large bill related to the station property. It was like an old water bill that account never got transferred over to the town, so it had just been kind of accumulating, and we had to pay that once it was discovered that we obviously weren't paying it. We didn't have a category for sexual station utilities, so we had just added it to the schoolhouse line item. So again, this is just really just correcting that, that issue. And then with the gatehouse museum, majority of the funding that's being added to that line is, again, for the building maintenance, for the front porch work, that's sixty thousand dollars. Then we increased salaries a little bit, given the additional hours that our, our now full-time curator is going to be utilizing. Parks, we increased a little bit. Again, this is separate from parks maintenance, this is just our parks and recreation budget, because there's some equipment that we want to replace, mainly for the movies in the park. You know, our speakers are pretty old, we want to actually improve the sound system just so we can do a better job of making announcements during events, things like that. And then the last item is the capital outlay line. Streets and roads is increasing, because that's actually how much money we've spent in this category, so that adds up about, by about thirty thousand dollars. As most of you remember, anytime we receive highway user revenues, if we don't spend all of that money in one fiscal year, it has to be set aside specifically for streets and roads, and then you can utilize that for other projects in other fiscal years. So again, that money is just coming out of a reserve that we have for paving. And then the general government property by two hundred twenty-five thousand. Again, that's to offset the, the increase in unassigned fund balance that we're using for the station project. And that is, in a nutshell, all of the expenses that we're tweaking for budget revision. Are there any questions about the expense side of things?
So the Sykesville Station Utilities, is that what we're moving over now? Do you think that'll be good for the rest of the fiscal year?
Yes, so the increase that we've had and ongoing, yes. We should be okay with the category. And then you mentioned the seventy-one thousand dollars in utilities or preutility relocation. So again, as part of that three hundred fifty thousand that we allocated for the station project, that's basically like the first big expense that we've had from that allocation. Again, it should show up in that, that last line item that I, that I referenced. So it's again, basically, an expense for the, the general government property in the capital category.
Yeah, I think, I think I just missed that on the, on the treasurer's report. I saw that check at the end of it.
Yeah.
I didn't notice the category changed.
Maybe it didn't hit the categories yet, but that's, that's where it'll show up, as part of the expense. So again, if there's no other questions, or if there are questions, obviously, staff is recommending approval of the introduction of budget revision, with a public hearing to be scheduled for our next meeting on February...
Twenty-fourth.
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 And not, not a question, but just a comment that legal fees are now at two hundred fifty thousand, which, I don't know, is more than we spend on entire pieces of our budget. So it's more of a comment, just to say, this is an expensive thing that we're doing. We all know it, but I think it's important that the public understands it and we highlight it. And then in terms of the ARPA funds, we're not seeing more money being spent against that. Can you just remind me why again? Why we haven't seen the big allotment? I think that the actual spend on it happens a few months out, right? Or maybe it's further?
It does, so again, all of that revenue right now is allocated, well, I shouldn't say all of it, like, let's say ninety-five percent of it is allocated to the streetscape project, and because that project hasn't kicked off yet, we have...
That's when we'll see it, okay.
Yeah, when that project starts and we actually receive invoices for work being completed is when you'll see that, that spend.
Thank you.
And that's just in the planning stages right now, so we're not going to see any movement for a while.
No, no, I mean, we, we hope to be able to kick that off here pretty soon. Again, because again, the idea is we want to get at least some of that work done before event season really kicks off in the middle of May, actually, you know, early May. So again, we want to make sure we at least have, like, Baldwin Drive and that parking lot completed before farmers market is scheduled to start.
Okay.
Yeah.
That's awesome.
I'll make a motion to approve the introduction of ordinance twenty twenty-five dash oh one as presented, and to schedule the public hearing and adoption for February twenty-fourth.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passed.
Nice job putting it all together. It's a big one.
Thank you. Yeah, I, I think I've said it before, the Excel spreadsheet, color-coded.
You like that, huh?
That's, that's the best.
We'll start changing colors up on you.
As long as they're different, as long as they're different colors, so.
I like that you give it an Excel F, so I can...
Yeah, if you like it.
Jiggle the numbers a little bit. Love what I see.
Keep up that, keep up that dissemination of information.
Andrew?
Loving it.
And then at the end of the year, at the end of the fiscal year, we're going to have a final budget revision.
That's correct. So once the budget revision is adopted, is usually when we begin our budgeting process for FY twenty-six. And then once that's completed, we finish the year, fiscal year off with the budget revision number two.
Just to finalize, clean up everything?
That's correct.
Yep. All right, moving on. Announcements and reports. The next meeting is Monday, February twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-five, here at the townhouse, seven eight, seven P M. Come one, come all. We have volunteer opportunities for Crossing Guard and Police Auxiliary. If you are interested, please email town@sykesville.net for more information, and we would love to have you come aboard. Staff updates, since we just finished with the budget revision, let's bring Jen up, and she can continue with the money talk.
Well, he just made my life super easy. I'm here to present the treasurer's report for January twenty twenty-five. We are at a positive cash flow this month, so that's really super. The biggest thing that we received is five hundred ninety K for property taxes, and then the biggest outflow was the seventy-one thousand for the station project. As of now, the only thing that we're looking forward to this month, because it's been kind of quiet again, is we're supposed to get more revenue for the taxes, because it's about four to five months before we actually see incomes from the extensions on October fifteenth. So other than that, that's it. And I only have one question about the seventy-one thousand dollar station project, which, as Joe said, the money's set aside, so we're continuously investing in the town.
I just found it on the treasurer's report, so I apologize, but the question is right there, I see. I was looking forward up at the historic buildings for some reason, I apologize for that, so thanks, thanks for clarifying.
Yeah, and I really enjoyed doing the budget with Joe and deep diving, it's fun to get to know the city more, so, and I want to thank everybody.
Excellent.
Any other questions?
Nope.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Jay, want to come up?
Yes, ma'am.
And just for the sake of my staff here today, in case you don't know them, for the record, Lieutenant Kilgore, Corporal Barrett, and P S E. Hopper are all here.
Welcome.
Certainly shows their interest in, in town events and things going on, so it's always good to have them.
Must be mad at somebody.
What's that?
Said they must be mad at somebody. That's what I'm worried about.
Be careful.
What'd you say?
Slow down.
I think they know that red Mustang very well. So we have a very short public safety report, because it only covers nine days between January twenty-first and February second. As you can see, four hundred and sixty-five total events. Nothing truly remarkable in there, but I do have some, some comments I want to make. Two incident reports during that timeframe, which again, is just a small, small sample. As you remember, the last report was very long and had quite a few incident reports, so this is a short one. But I wouldn't like to, are there any questions about any of those incidents? Would like to make a few comments. First of all, I know you guys had a chance to see, there was a lot of good assist other agency and community policing reports, again, as usual, just a couple I wanted to highlight. Several in here where Sergeant Lacy uses his expertise and his vast network of resources to solve crimes, not only in our town, but in other towns. He just has a knack of seeing these investigative bulletins that come across and using his resources and connecting the dots for, for other agencies. And it's just a tribute to, to him that he's always willing to help out, and oftentimes it leads to arrests in, in other jurisdictions. So he's a great asset to have, and when he's not solving our cases, he's helping out other departments when, when he can. So a lot of good work there, several, several different departments, including a case in Westminster. So it's very good work. As you saw, the turkey vulture caper has been solved, so we're getting tired of getting those phone calls, and luckily, thanks to Sergeant Slareth and Natural Resources Police, we're able to relocate the bird to another location, so that's a good thing.
A long night, and here's over.
Yeah, until the next one comes along.
And it was just one?
Just one.
They roost in...
This was an injured one, couldn't fly, so, yeah.
It was behind becs, right, or in becs?
It was all over the place, yeah, but most, it seemed to like becs, for whatever reason. Couple of good community policing incidents, not a whole lot with P S E. Hop on at this time, which she's usually the star of our community policing events, but another good one here where P S E. Jacobs, again, is trying to help people out with winter clothing, always, always looking to help people that seem to be in need. And again, it shows the compassion, empathy that our, our staff have, and always willing to help out and help those in need, so still very proud. With that, unless there are any other questions, I did want to briefly talk about our annual report. Getting close to finalizing the results, I wanted to thank, publicly thank Lieutenant Kilgore for helping me put the numbers together this year, as he does every year, about some very promising stats. I'm just going to summarize a few here. We had an increase in, in total events again this year, seventeen percent increase from, from last year. So, you know, with that added officer that we have, that number will continue to go up, I would expect, because a lot of those events are self-generated. In terms of crimes, some very noteworthy positive trends here in town, we had, we reported a forty-five percent reduction in assaults, seventy-five percent reduction in burglaries, eighteen percent reduction in fraud and ID theft, thirty-six percent reduction in property destruction cases, very happy to report a sixty percent reduction in overdoses, which kind of mirrors the, the state and national trends in that, in that regard, twenty-two percent reduction in thefts and a sixty percent reduction in stolen vehicles. So I'd like to think a lot of those reductions are because of our proactive efforts and our investigative, you know, ability and, and closing some of these cases, but can't take all the credit for it, but it's nice to know that in those, those particular categories, you know, crime is down in our town. So something to be proud of and happy, happy for, and hope, hope it continues. That's, oh, I did want to mention the auxiliary, of course, can't forget them. I know Jeff is probably watching from several thousand miles away. They had, again, another banner year for the auxiliary. It was slightly down from last year, but I believe it was in the area of, I have it here somewhere, fourteen hundred and sixty-nine hours, total hours of volunteer service, of which Lieutenant Queen had almost, wow, about a third of that himself. Again, just a slight decrease from last year, but supported over forty special events, thirty-eight patrol activities, and a hundred and sixteen hours of training. Again, if you would use the I C T formula that calculates volunteer rates, that would equate to a savings to the town of approximately thirty-seven thousand dollars, if you, if you average, if you multiply that fourteen sixty-nine by the, the given rate of twenty-five forty-three per hour. And so it's quite a substantial savings to the town. And as you know, they're integral to our operations, especially our town events, and we couldn't do what we do without them, so kudos to the auxiliary. And you know, they're nine, nine officers strong, and although we always are looking for additional officers, we're, we're pretty full there as well, so. Good staffing all, all the way around, and it's a nice position to be in. Want to thank you all for that, for your support of that. Any questions you have for me?
No, but I have a comment. I saw a charge for some training materials for Lieutenant Queen. I think that's wonderful that we're keeping him trained while he's on deployment, so when he returns, he won't fall behind. I, I think that, I saw a check for that. Did I not, did I misread it in the check?
Yeah, I'm trying to think what that was. I don't think that was...
It appeared to be training materials, like a publication that he needs to stay currently. What I'm getting at is the idea that you're keeping him trained, so when he returns, he won't fall behind, shows the fact that we're looking ahead. I like looking at it.
Yeah, I think that was something he paid out of his own pocket, of course, we reimbursed him, but it was for the whole auxiliary to have access to some, some training.
Education is still very important and fast-moving. Good to see he's, again, showing his usual initiative.
He hasn't, he hasn't missed a beat. Again, Lord knows what he's doing and how far away he is, but he's still staying on top of things, so we're lucky to have him. What's that?
He's still emailing, which is incredible.
Yeah, yeah, just at odd hours. Anything else for me?
Thank you.
Thanks, Chief.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Joe?
Just a few things, want to remind everybody that, so obviously, we have an election coming up in May. All of the information is now available on the town's website, so the candidate forms are updated and available, if anybody's wanting to go ahead and throw their name in the ring. I know the next meeting will be appointing our election judges for Election Day, so again, just a heads up with what's happening. So tomorrow, there's going to be a weather event. We're hoping it stays light enough where it's not going to affect solid waste collection or garbage collection on Wednesday morning. So again, keeping, keeping our fingers crossed that the trend keeps moving a little bit further south, so it means that our totals get less and less. And then outside of that, the only thing I wanted to mention, because I know Councilman Keenan Burnout last time, was a little bit of an update on code enforcement. We've had some, at least some internal conversations about how we can better that process. You know, right now, it's still, you know, complaint-driven. There is basically a standard form letter that we have, you know, anytime we get a complaint or see an issue, we do have a letter, but any follow-up after that and any kind of escalation as far as, you know, fines, you know, we're still working through that process, exactly how that's going to work. I know there is a process through district court, at least I think it's district court, where you can, you know, fine individuals for, for code enforcement violations upon, you know, showing that they're not coming into compliance, but, you know, as far as exactly what that process is yet, we haven't, we haven't quite crossed that bridge. So, but we are getting there, and I've had some conversations with our town attorney to kind of help us through that process and make sure that whatever we do end up adopting as far from a policy standpoint is going to be something that's sustainable.
Thanks.
Do, do we need to adopt a new policy, or do we just need to have somebody go out and enforce the code that's on the books right now?
Well, so, like, right now, the only thing that we have really on the books is a fee schedule and an assignment of who is able to enforce, and that, that's pretty much it. There's no, like, internal policy or internal control on exactly how those processes work. So those are the things that we're working through, and that's kind of right now why we're more complaint-driven, because we don't really have an active code enforcement process right now. It's not like once a week, I, you know, schedule some time where I drive around town to look for code enforcement.
Right, right.
So again, that's, that's what we're, that's what we're looking for. That's what we're looking at, is, you know, do we, do we become more proactive, or do we keep it, you know, somewhat complaint-driven, but we just have a more defined process on how we're actually going to handle those and who's going to follow up with all of it.
I wonder, how many complaints do you have? I know this is off the cuff, Joe, but how many complaints were, how many complaints were there last year, any idea?
Off the cuff, I don't know.
Yeah, I was going to say, it's usually...
It's, it's not many that we get. Usually, it's, it's not so much volume, it's follow-up. It's, oh, hey, I didn't send a letter, or I didn't, I didn't do something to, to get the, the one violation that somebody was, had brought to our attention corrected.
Okay. Will we be able to get an update, maybe not next meeting, but maybe the first March meeting, on the station and where, where construction's standing?
Where we stand?
Yeah.
Yeah, we can, we can work on that.
Okay.
I know, right now, they, and again, this is off the cuff, we can do a more detailed explanation at a later date, but they are still working on the site plan for it, so again, one of the things that has to happen is they have to figure out exactly how they want the internal layout to work, so that they know how big the addition has to be, how big the kitchen, where everything's actually going to end up being, and then build the site plan off of that, because once the site plan's created, then they can come to our planning commission and get that formally adopted. Plus, once they, once they finish the internal layout, that information has to go back to M H T for review one more time. Now, it's not a, it's not a full approval process like it was before, but they have to make sure that what they're actually going to do follows with what was approved several months ago.
So their goal of Mother's Day is probably not...
It's probably a bit aggressive.
Maybe July. Thank you. Okay, that helps, thanks.
Any other questions?
I fully anticipate our parking lot being completed before they are ready to open.
Good, that's good.
That's good. We'll be ready for it.
Timing-wise, that works out.
I have a question. You had mentioned elections coming up. Next meeting, we're going to be selecting the election board?
Judges, yeah.
Judge?
Right.
When do candidates need to say that they're going to...
By the second meeting in March, which I believe is March twenty-fourth.
Yes, at noon.
Okay. So if you're interested, grab your paperwork online and bring them by March twenty-fourth. And then you had mentioned about the weather event possibly, in, in the event that things go haywire and Public Works is slammed with snow, will publicly notified that Wednesday's trash pickup is going to be delayed?
Yeah, we'll, we'll do our best to put out public notices tomorrow to let them know that it'll probably be delayed. In all likelihood, what will end up happening is it might just be a little bit of a later pickup on Wednesday. I don't think we're going to have to cancel it. It'll just have to be a little bit later than what normally would be.
Okay. Any other questions for Joe? Council committee updates, and start with Mark.
Well, since our last meeting, I attended the Managing the Strategic Cyber Security Challenge at Legit. Being an enterprise software guy, it's always good to, I mean, I, you know, you have a basic knowledge, but I went there, and the ARPA has advanced since I retired. Several of us thought that the first fifteen, twenty minutes should be part of a core course. It's still amazing to me how many people seem to take, ah, we don't need to worry about cybersecurity, that's not a thing, is it? Or, yeah, it is. But it was a very good, it was not a practitioner course in any way, didn't have to program anything. It was designed to help us, help him manage the enterprise I'm putting together at After Action Report of a page of things to think about and to ask our IT team. It was well worth the time.
Thank you for coming.
There was a planning commission meeting last week. I was unable to attend because of some other conflicts at my regular employment, but my understanding is that in March, there's anticipation that we could see the first version of a site plan from the developer in relation to the assisted living facility. Is there...
It'll, it'll be, so they've applied for a conditional use application for assisted living on parcel B. The way the process works is the planning commission has to give basically a recommendation to the Board of Zoning Appeals as to whether or not that's a, I guess, a allowable, not allowable use, but an appropriate use for where they're planning on putting it. So the planning commission will hear that presentation in March, at least begin deliberations, if not make a recommendation to the Board of Zoning Appeals at that meeting. That'll be reduced to writing and then re-presented to the planning commission, probably at the April meeting for ratification, let's call that. And then a BCA hearing will be scheduled after that.
Will that come before the council, Joe? In any way, for the conditional use portion of it?
No.
No.
There's, there's no process that brings it before the council.
So if you're interested in sort of seeing this process play itself out, you know, watching that planning commission will get you some information in reference to it, and I'm sure that'll be bringing back news after the next meeting.
We, we would encourage everyone to watch the live stream.
Livestream.
From home.
The council people to watch the livestream from home.
So the process would be planning commission with recommendations going to the zoning board?
Right.
If the zoning board passes, does it go back to the planning commission?
Right. Once, if the use is approved, then they'll have to go through the, the actual site development process. So yeah, then they'll, they'll be before the planning commission several times after that.
Okay. Leo?
Yeah, a couple things from DSC. The tickets for Art and Wine Festival are now live on the website. Art and Wine Festival is May third. Tickets are always limited, so get them early if you can. The Jedi Committee has officially launched the Sykesville Black Heritage Project. You've probably seen the banner out on Main Street. This starts, marks the start of an in-depth research project dedicated to documenting and celebrating Sykesville's black history and heritage. And to support the initiative, there is a dedicated webpage to visit, and there's an all-day fundraiser on February eighteenth, supported by The French Twist and The Locomotive,